I'd like to open the June, July 29th, 2014 Planning Board Meeting. And I'd ask if anybody in the audience is recording. El Cada's recording and...
Nope.
Robin's not recording.
Okay.
Okay. First on the agenda is, should we go with Tony Martin's first?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up.
Okay.
Like to speak with us about Chestnut Street.
Canterbury.
Canterbury, I'm sorry, Canterbury, Canterbury.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Martin from Robinson Donovan. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of an issue that occurred. I was out of town for a couple of weeks and so I missed your last meeting. So, one, thank you for indulging me to the opportunity to come in and talk to you tonight. My primary purpose is to just give you some background on behalf of my client. I represent Sid Ed, which is the property owner and then obviously the developer of all the Greatwood phases, who in conjunction with Dan Lawyer Associates has developed and built the houses out there. But I know Rick Granger was here observing last time at a meeting, but I represent Sid Ed, which is the Davis family that owns the land. So, this was brought to my attention when I got back, thankfully. Robin was kind enough to alert me. I have had a chance to do some due diligence because we really didn't know his name, frankly, until we got educated. Primarily for credibility issues for my client in our office, I wanted to just make sure you understood a few things because as I went through and tried to ascertain, you know, the fact pattern of what happened, you know, some pieces I think were either left out or confused, not intentionally, but how those things happened. So, it arises, I think, this lot is a, you know, we do phases in Greatwoods. And so, this is a section of Canterbury and this happens to be Lot 10. And at a packet, and Dan Lawyer Associates or Rick Granger, I prefer, excuse me, it's Phase 11, not 10, have the permit, we followed the standard practice we have followed for phases one through 11 and now 12 is there, in which the package of materials was submitted at the planning board, one of which consisted of a plan that was initially drawn and prepared by Joe Ward, who was an engineer. And that plan had a building envelope on it. But those plans were not, and they were submitted, but just to show what they were, which is an engineering drawing, not a surveyor drawing. So, but the plan that was submitted and approved for this phase, stamped and recorded, did not show anything, houses on. So, this is what you folks approved and this shows no houses on. So, I didn't want anyone to think that I was getting some information like you submitted a plan and got approved, it had a house on it, and then you went and did something different with the house. So, this, you know, if you go to the record, the registry of deeds right now like I did and said, "Okay, let me look up this phase, this is the plan, it was approved," and said, "Here it is," you would say, "There's no houses on this." So, I just wanted to be clear that that was never anyone's intention to put a building envelope on it. The engineer, Joe Ward, sometimes puts these on. See, this is Joe's drawing, it's stamped by him. This is part of the package, that's telling someone's initial confusion. It just has these dotted sketch for building envelope, you know, references, but there's no, you know, there's no contrast to setbacks or anything. It's just informational. It was part of the scale and package. It's topography and grading is what this plan is. All right? This is the plan that was, for the top, for topography, this was in the package. For recording purposes, this was what was recorded. And you have these in your records, I brought them if anyone wants to look at them. So, I'm satisfied that in terms of what's for public record, this is what was the plan. So, as the lots get built out, there were a few empty lots, decision was made to put a house up on that lot in question. We have approved plans that are used throughout Greatwoods to try and keep them uniform and keep the subdivision looking nice. A plan was picked for the lot and having interviewed, you know, Rick, having interviewed the Smiths, having talked to my client, they selected, you know, a house that they thought would be a little different from their menu of houses on the street so that hopefully attract a new buyer that wouldn't look like the one to the right or the one to the left, which aren't identical to begin with. And so, Rick presented one of their standard plans to Donnie and Mike Smith and said, "Can you put this plan on this six-sided lot?" So, it's a little unusual that it's a six-sided lot. So, Mike prepared this with the layout, but, and I don't have the, you know, we can put it in the record for Robin, but Mike sent an email to Rick saying, "You know, I think this fits, but out of an abundance of caution, go see the building inspector." And so, that's the way we like to do business, not put it on and then, you know, rather than ask for permission, ask for forgiveness, go see the building inspector. Rick asked the building inspector to come to the site with this plan. Building inspector looked at it and said, "You're good to go." Rick filed this, our application, paid his fee, and as he has done with the prior hundred and something lots, sometimes the building permit doesn't come for 12, 15 days. That we don't know why, but it doesn't. And, you know, many of you work in the field, you know, building inspector says, "I'm okay. I've got the people doing another, you know, project in Greatwoods. Dig the hole, let's get going." And of course, you know, we're anxious to get the thing ready and buttoned up so that they can work through the winter. So, after the foundation is poured, as you all know, then this issue arose. So, it's important for my clients to make sure that this board understands that, one, this is the plan on record that doesn't show any houses. The only thing that showed them was the topography, that we checked with the surveyor who thought it fit, but sent an email saying, "Please check with the ZBAs," building inspector. That we checked with the, and there's no dispute, you know, the building permit, we have, I have a copy of the building permit, which probably all seen, and gave us a building permit. We put it in and now find ourselves in a position where we can't go forward. It's, I'm not, I'm saying this only for informational purposes, but, and some of you gentlemen may know better, but I am told that having incurred the cost of putting it in and if you had to take it out and move it, all tolls, close to $40,000 to, you know, because you've got the expense of having put it in, then taking it out, then putting it back in. So, I understand that the board is contemplating taking an appeal of the building inspector's decision as to a side yard versus a rear yard, as to whether or not a lot can have two rear yards. I'm not here to lobby or persuade you on that issue. You've already had apparently a discussion of that. I use discussion lightly, having watched the review of the hearing, so, but I did want you, you know, I didn't want you to understand if any, if there were any factors that you were taking into consideration as to the developer or builder, you know, not trying to comply with the rules. I didn't want, I want you to understand that I would ask that you not use, consider that as a basis because we did everything we can to do everything properly. The hardship is going to fall on us if you appeal it and someone determines, the zoning board appeals determines that, you know, it shouldn't have been issued. You know, we obviously have some options, you know, and I don't want to pretend that we don't, none of which are particularly favorable, but there are options. But I think it's important for you folks to know that, as I said, that not only was the plan of record, not showing any layouts, but, and I talked to Mike Splitthing-Mausian yesterday that, you know, show me his email, and Rick, you know, I think has made it clear to everyone that he checked. And frankly, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable for someone to rely on the zoning enforcement officer, building inspector, giving him, you know, an okay, that it was at the side yard, that it was a side yard. He was 15 feet beyond the 20-foot setback for the side yard and proceeded to do it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that I can. You know, we want, you know, obviously it would be great if you said, "Okay, you know, we'll go on principle, some other lot or some other project." That would be great, but as I said, I'm not here to argue. I'm here to inform to the extent that in case you didn't have any of this information. So, it's obviously a delicate situation. I feel to some degree, frankly, that we're kind of going the middle here and, you know, it's unfortunate.
Absolutely. I mean, I think the board absolutely appreciates you coming in and explaining what happened and the situations that have forecame throughout this matter. I don't know if anybody on the board has any questions.
All I can say is, I've worked with Mr. Granger for many years now on that subdivision since it first went in because it was on conservation and dealt with him for almost the entire time that subdivision's been in there. And I've always been impressed by the, his professionalism and that of the developer and of course, the landowner whom, one of whom I know. So, I, you know, I do not personally mean this to be any kind of disparagement against them, okay, in terms of their integrity or anything like that. Certainly respect them for what they're doing there. You know, builders do realize that there is a 30-day appeal period once a building permit is issued and that they are proceeding at their own risk if they choose to go prior to that. As to our building inspector's policies and procedures, I can't comment. He doesn't report to us and he has his own way of doing things. And if that, you know, sometimes puts people in a delicate position, then unfortunately that's not something that we can control, so. But personally, I do have a, and I know you're not here to debate this, a difference of opinion with him as to what constitute the rear lot line in this particular case. That's where I stand.
I recognize that, you know, builders are supposed to understand that there's a 30-day appeal period. I'm not sure that that's always fresh in their mind, but especially if you've got a hundred of these and it's always gone the same way. So, I don't fault Rick for moving forward like that. I think it was reasonable to rely on it, given the history of this was, you know, your first lot and you were venturing into some new program, then you might say, maybe just out of an abundance of caution, I don't know, wait, but I think he felt it was reasonable to proceed.
Ralph, what do you think?
Actually, I have a question, if you don't mind, for Robin. Under the subdivision rules and regulations, are they required to do a building envelope on the plan?
We have on the, on the certain sheets...
Right.
As Mr. Ward had there, but those are not the ones that have in the past been recorded. Years ago, the whole plans were recorded. And I think when they changed to, from $25 to $75 a sheet, they stopped and only did the layout sheets. So, if you go into any phase of Greatwoods, you will find the layout sheet for that particular phase of Greatwoods or any other subdivision. I mean, not just Greatwoods, but the board, yeah, the board does endorse each sheet, but each sheet does not get recorded.
Recorded.
So, this, so I think the answer to your question, Ralph, is no. You're not required at the approval of the subdivision to show at the registry of deeds the layout of a house.
Right, at the registry of deeds.
Right, at the registry.
And the reason I'm asking is because when plans come in front of us, one of the main things I do, I go through, I look at the building envelope. I've brought it up a few times with new subdivisions. Well, where's the back line? Is that in the middle of the wetlands? Is it not in the middle of the wetlands? And I rely on that sheet. It was my understanding in error that all the sheets that are submitted to us were recorded.
That is not correct.
And I, I later found that out, actually, and, and I think we've had a discussion that, I think in the future, that's something that we should have done is have them all recorded.
The building application then does have to show, so this was part of the building application, so this shows the layout and the specs.
Right.
And so, one of these is done on each building application. So, the town would have a record of the sighting of the house.
Right. But when we're doing a definitive plan...
Definitive plan will not show us the layout of the house.
Not the layout of the house, but the building envelope.
Envelope.
I think, I think that's the difference between what you're talking about.
And I believe that's what we're looking at.
Which is more towards this plan here where you have building envelope shown.
Yes, but as you can see, there are no, there are no legends on this. And that, this is a topography and grading plan, not a building plan, okay? You can't find a legend on here that says this is, many of these, if you, you know, on this scale, they're all, you know, too close or too far. It's just showing where you can fit a house on the grading scale. And that's why it's, and it's drawn by an engineer, not by a surveyor.
I, I would disagree on the grading scale because I, I've seen many plans with slopes like this on a building envelope that technically you can't put a house on that. They level it out and...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They redo the grading, but the building envelope is based on your 50-foot setback, your 50, you know, 25-foot side yard.
Now, here's one right here that's practically touching the line. I mean, these are just, you know, demonstrative or illustrative. I can tell you from a legal standpoint, I could not come in and say, "Oh, I can build this house just like this because on the grading plan, we laid out a building envelope." I'd have to come in with my building plan application to show you 50 feet here, 20 feet here, to show you that it fits.
Okay, regardless of all that, I understand that your client did not do anything on purpose to do something that was non-conforming. I, I accept your, what you're saying and, and I'm sure he didn't, but we are where we are, where we're at. Where are we, where are we going to go from here?
Yeah, that's a fair summary. I just wanted, you know, like I say at the outset...
Absolutely.
I, I, I'm positive he didn't come in here and say, "I know I'm not supposed to do this, but I'm going to do it anyways." I mean, I clearly accept that. I'm good to go in that. But we're, we are where we're at, and what do you want to do?
I mean, you step...
What are we going to do?
It's two separate issues, the, the appeal of the building inspector's decision the day after this planning board...
Well, he shouldn't have even given a permit after having a public meeting, or at least a planning board meeting, the day before where it was an issue.
Right.
I mean, if, if I were the building inspector and the day before there was a planning board meeting where this was discussed, I would have said, "Hey, let me put everything on ice and figure out how we're going to sort this out in where we're at." I wouldn't have issued a building permit, particularly since it was not complying. It didn't comply.
That's the difference of opinion. But that's a difference of opinion.
This, this date is June 30th.
Yes, and I...
I know, I'm just being frank, you know...
I know you are, and I got a copy of that one also, and I called the department and asked why the date was not correct.
So, the date was inaccurate?
Yes.
Why?
Well, it's...
Well, why is the date inaccurate? I mean, it is what it is, right? Why isn't it?
The day after the meeting, I actually went into the office and I requested to look at the MUNIS system to see if a permit was issued. I asked that a screen be printed out that shows the MUNIS system as of that day, that time. And at that point in time, there was nothing in the MUNIS system for a permit to be issued. When the permit's issued, you're supposed to go right into the MUNIS system, put it in, print out the permit. So, at least from the looks of it on the computer at that point in time, there had been no building permit issued.
What other record is there?
And according to Mr. Granger, that night, that a permit hadn't been issued.
Right. A physical permit hasn't been issued.
I mean, verbal...
But I'm told, I'm told that that is...
Either way, I, I don't think that's where we stand here. I think what we have to look at is...
We do, we did get a building permit that shows June 30th.
I think the board's decision is, do we feel that the determination of the zoning enforcement officer was correct in calling that particular lot line a side lot, or do we think it's a rear lot line?
Right.
And are we going to appeal his decision or not?
I, I am in favor of appealing it.
That has to be done tonight, that is, because you are out of time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we grant an extension for tonight's meeting, right?
Right. And Mr. Carabeta is in favor of...
Well...
Appealing it, so he's, he's not here tonight.
So, we have something to discuss. I'll make a motion that we file an appeal.
Yeah.
I will second it for further discussion.
Yeah, and I'm not looking to drag it out to, you know, beyond, you have to make a decision tonight because Robin was kind enough, you were, to allow me to come in when I was away, so here, this is the clock. I turn into a pumpkin in the midnight, so.
Any other discussion?
Looking at the plan, I, I think it's a rear lot line. I believe the rear lot is split. I would like to see what the ZBA says, if nothing else, for further, you know, divisions in all of land so that we have a definitive answer going forwards.
I agree with that. I mean, I've seen many, many lot lines, rear lot lines that are curved, that have angles in them, but they're still have that tendency to be parallel to the front line, and there are clearly side yard lines as well, so that's where I'm coming from, why I think we should appeal it and get a ruling.
I'll have to, I'll have to agree also on that. All in favor of sending a notice of appeal to the ZBA?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor. Order zero. I'll get to sign this.
I'll have to sign, I'll have to look at it. That's a question.
By the way, I understand the hardship your client has, but we really have no other decision.
I didn't come in here with fire and burst off.
And this is in...
But I, it was more important for me to, to make a record of the time.
With respect that you came in and did what you did.
You did a good job, but it is what it is and...
Yeah, and then, you know, as I say, we have other avenues we can follow. Frankly, I, expecting this to flow this way, my greater concern is frankly, if, if the ZBA, it has to be a hearing and there's time to write a decision, so it gets dragged out, and then there's appeal runs from that, you know, if, or whatever. Somebody may remember neighboring community when the planning board, does it mean we suit each other or, you know, differences in opinions and, you know, the project got held up for years. That won't happen, I hope, here, but it becomes a slippery slope and, you know, and as I said, my clients want to make it sure that, and I think I, we took every step we could to try and get the feedback necessary. Unlucky for us that, you know, this happened. So, what is the hearing going to be before the zoning board...
I would have to check because it's...
Can you hand over sometime?
August 1st or September 1st.
By the way, I, if I were your client, I, I think my feeling would be that from this moment on, I wouldn't be putting in any foundations until I had a permit and the appeal period was over with. I mean, it's one in a million that's going to be an issue, but when it is, it's a costly issue.
I don't think we'll be back here again with this issue.
I mean, I'm sorry you even had to come this time.
But, you know, I can't fault the builders, 105 homes and, you know, building inspector says, "Here's your permit, you're all set, you're good to go," and you're working out a house over here and you've got, you know, the economy's a scale, then then bring the crew down here to dig and pour, you know, as opposed to saying, "Okay, let me wait three days and bring it back out," and, you know, laying off your guys for a while and coming back, you know, there's a lot of practical things once you, you know, so I can appreciate that, but, you know, it'll just have to, have to be the practice and procedure for the remaining lots. And it won't, it won't happen again, but we'll see where it goes and we'll see how we deal with it in a minute.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Enjoy the rest of it.
I should have played the ear card.
Thanks an awful lot, Jim.
See you later.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, you're welcome. Good night.
I have a request for waiver of site plan, Joyce Cohen Crowe, 37 Blochett Street, Springfield, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Quality, can't read her writing.
Respite, R-E-S-P.
Oh, Respite, Respite Services. Owner of business is Sarah Smith. Her address is 53 Shepherd Drive, Springfield, Mass. Property district is commercial. Proposed hours is 24 hours a day as needed. Number of employees is one. Summary of business operations, provide services to local agencies contracted with Department of Development Services and on a needed emergency basis. The application's been signed and dated June 10th, 2014, and then signed by another individual for July 14th, 2014.
So, this is an office in an office building, basically?
Reminder.
Reminder building.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
And the only other thing I have are the minutes of May 20th and June 3rd.
Thanks.
I've sent in my corrections.
I had none in either one.
I'm good with both.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody else have anything else for this evening?
National Night Out is next Tuesday, I believe, August 7th. It's that next Tuesday.
What do we do that bit?
We don't have to do anything. It's just at the high school and, you know, they just, the police department puts it together and they have a helicopter from the fire department and there's a bounce house if you'd like.
Oh, that sounds like fun. I'm next Tuesday.
And I assume everybody got in a invitation to the pool party?
No.
Yes.
From Colin?
No, I don't know anything about it.
That's...
Sunday.
It's Sunday.
The third.
Next Sunday, at noon.
This Sunday. Oh, that's right, it's only Tuesday.
It's only Tuesday, yeah. The one that's coming up.
Yeah.
At noon time, they're having a big celebration of Pine Knoll.
Oh.
The opening of the pool.
Wonderful.
I saw that they just got a nomination for access award.
Yes.
I think that, that's awesome.
Colin has done an awesome job.
Make a comment on that after the cameras are...
The only other thing I have for the board is just, we had talked about changing the language under subdivision rules and regulations, A and R. We had agreed to it. I'd just like us to ask Robin to set up a public hearing because anytime you change the rules and regulations, we have to hold a public hearing. And I think at the same time, put on, as far as the plans go, to change that, all definitive plans, all paperwork from them will be recorded.
How about putting that in conjunction with the signed by law, public hearing?
Sure.
To save money?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the, the notice fees have to come out of the planning board, so that way I can combine them...
I think that would be great, do it all.
We can do it all at the same time. Now, you had asked that the signed by law be closer to the public, to the meeting, which I believe is going to be in October, so it'll probably be sometime in September. Is that all right? Is that enough?
Yeah.
Close enough for you? Okay.
I don't think we can get a whole lot of subdivisions between now and September.
No.
And by the way, a quick... And by the way, a quick scan of this, of the subdivision regs, shows that building envelopes are not a required item in the building, in the subdivision.
Right, it's been desired, but not.
It's not required. So we may want to think about whether or not you want to show the required zoning setbacks. Instead of saying building envelope.
I think it should be shown.
Say, required zoning setbacks should be shown.
Well.
But the building envelope, doesn't that take into account wetlands? Obviously, you can't build.
That's a lot of work for each one.
Well, just a surveyor can.
That's a huge expense for the builder.
But.
Well, the, no, the builder's already, if he's, if he's got wetlands, he's already had to survey the wetlands.
Right.
And to put the jurisdictional line on, on the plan that he submits to Conservation. That's already been done, okay? And they have to get approval from Conservation for a permanent limited work line before they come to this board. So that, that's all been done.
See, the other side of the coin is if it's not on the plan, someone has a mistake, like tonight.
Right.
The cost is even greater. So maybe there's, and I think the cost is very slight, but whatever it is, I think it's a lot cheaper than a mistake.
And it gets a lot more complicated if, you know, in the case of Greatwood, C-Vet has done the whole thing. We've also seen developments go through two or three developers or more.
Especially when you have to rely on the building inspector to make that determination.
Well, irrespective of that, the developer who actually does the plans may not, will not be the developer who actually builds the subdivision or finishes it. And the subsequent owners, whether they be a bank or someone who bought it from a bank after it was foreclosed, have to rely on what plans are already there. And if the stuff is not on the plans, they don't know what they're looking at. So you need to.
And if he hires his own builder and says, hey, I bought this lot, here it is.
Yeah.
That new guy coming on board needs to have an idea of where to position the house.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree. I think it's up to the building inspector. You're going to put your house, here's your plot. I'm going to put my house right here. You can't put it there. Okay, let's put it right here then. You've got to, still got to go to the building inspector. He's going to tell you yes or no. It's up to the building inspector to give you a decision, final decision. He made a mistake. It is what it is.
Okay.
Why should the builder go through all that aggravation and suffering for someone who made a mistake? That's my, my, my feeling. You know, these plans are just going to be so complicated. It's just going to be so much stuff on there and it's just going to be that much more for the builder.
I think in the definitive plan, like was shown tonight, envelope was already there. It's just a matter of them putting it to scale and certifying that those are the setbacks. I mean, every plan that's come in front of us, or at least the last few, Pond View, Canterbury, they've all been on there. So, I mean, looking at it, if they're already putting them on there, all they have to do is list the setbacks and that way they're going forwards when we're looking at them. If there is, well, wait a minute, that, that's not the rear lot line, that's the time to question it before everything's already done.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
And they're going to do that anyway. When they're selling the lots, somebody comes in, looks at the lot, they want to know where they can put their house. The homeowner, the person buying, has no concept of what setbacks mean or how much backyard they're going to be able to have and all that kind of thing. So it's really, you know, the builder's got to do that eventually anyway. But anyway.
I think that was more a matter for discussion at the moment and when we have a full board, take a vote on whether or not we want to change the rules and regulations to include that.
Yeah, if we're going to change them, we may as well change them once instead of twice.
Do it all at the same time.
So just something to think about.